Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña.
Present.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present. We have a request for continuance. Do I have a motion for public hearing item 8A, building codes to be moved or continued to November 19th? Mayor Protam Adam?
So moved, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so Madam Clerk, will you announce the public comments, please?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Two individuals have presented cards in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker tonight is Bob Rickards, or better known as Buffalo Bob. Welcome, sir. I understand you have something to present tonight. Your daughter Shawnee is with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Rickards, and of course, I think I know every one of you because I used to be an employee here as your architect and city planner. But you may know that I am also a Western artist. I've done an awful lot of paintings, especially up at the Reagan Library where we did the Lewis and Clark expedition. At the suggestion of my daughter here, Shawnee, I have created an oil painting entitled "Borderline: Lest We Forget."
Wow. That's beautiful.
It's to honor the memory of those victims that were lied. Excuse me. There are 12 stars in the flag that represent the 12 individuals. I would like to donate this painting to the city, which ultimately will wind up with Borderline, and I'm going to let my daughter Shawnee explain how this is going to work. Okay?
I'll take this.
Well, since there is no current Borderline building for us to place this, the city has been generous enough to allow us to hang it as part of their exhibit in the Fred Cavalli Auditorium until January 6th. We are also making G. Clay copies of this, of this original size, but we also have eight-by-ten copies, and we're taking all of the profits from that and donating it to the Borderline Victims Fund.
You get to carry it.
All right.
The only thing that's mine is my signature.
Oh, that's not true.
That stays with the painting.
Yeah. You're not going anywhere. I just wanted to say on behalf of the city and also the families of the victims and the survivors of the Borderline and all the first responders, what a great blessing this is, and thank you for blessing our city. And you are a remarkable painter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Gary Hartung. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Hartung, you're next, sir.
Yes, my name is Gary Hartung. About eight weeks ago, I moved to Thousand Oaks, and I'd like to discuss affordable housing here. I did attend the homeless seminar, and I've noticed that there are a number of vacant lots here in Thousand Oaks. I live at the Oak Creek Senior Villas right across the street from the Tarantula Brewing Company, and there's a lot there that may be half an acre in size. I don't know if it's private property and that an individual already has a legal contract to do with the land as he wants to, but the city should do everything possible to see that every vacant lot here is going to be used for affordable housing. I'm kind of disturbed by a comment in the last couple of weeks in the Acorn about one gentleman, a resident near this acreage out in the north end of Newbury Park where they may want to build either apartments or a commercial facility, but he doesn't seem to believe that people who can't afford to pay maybe $700,000 here for a home should be given the opportunity to live in affordable apartments around here. And I have one other comment for Chief Hagel. There's kind of a problem with tailgating on Moore Park Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so if your deputies could pay attention to some of these characters and issue citations, if it hurts bad enough, they won't do it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is David Ellis. David, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm here speaking about 2198 Moore Park in Thousand Oaks. I wanted to know what's the reason that you guys are rejecting to make a convenient store with a gas station over there?
Okay, we can answer that following. We'll have someone answer that question for you.
Okay.
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Present. We have a request for continuance. Do I have a motion for public hearing item 8A, Building Codes, to be moved or continued to November 19th? Mayor Protam Adam?
So moved, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so Madam Clerk, will you announce the public comments, please?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official records should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. Two individuals have presented cards in pursuant to Council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker tonight is Bob Rickards, or better known as Buffalo Bob. Welcome, sir. I understand you have something to present tonight. Your daughter Shawnee is with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Rickards, and of course, I think I know every one of you because I used to be an employee here as your architect and city planner. But you may know that I am also a Western artist. I've done an awful lot of paintings, especially up at the Reagan Library, where we did the Lewis and Clark Expedition. At the suggestion of my daughter here, Shawnee, I have created an oil painting entitled "Borderline: Lest We Forget."
Wow. That's beautiful.
To honor... It's to honor the memory of those victims that were lied... Excuse me. There are 12 stars in the flag that represent the 12 individuals. I would like to donate this painting to the city, which ultimately will wind up with Borderline, and I'm gonna let my daughter Shawnee explain how this is gonna work, okay? I'll take this.
Since there is no current Borderline building for us to place this, the city has been generous enough to allow us to hang it as part of their exhibit in the Fred Cavalli Auditorium until January 6th. We are also making G-clay copies of this, of this original size, but we also have 8x10 copies, and we're taking all of the profits from that and donating it to the Borderline Victims Fund.
That's it? You get to carry it.
All right. All right.
The only thing that's mine is my signature.
Oh, that's not true.
That stays with the painting.
Yeah. You... Wait, you're not going anywhere. I just wanted to say on behalf of the city and also the families of the victims and the survivors of the Borderline and all the first responders, and what a great blessing this is, and thank you for blessing our city, and you are a remarkable painter, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Blessings. All right. Our next speaker will be Gary Hartung. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Hartung, you're next, sir. Good evening, sir.
Yes, my name is Gary Hartung. About eight weeks ago, I moved to Thousand Oaks, and I'd like to discuss affordable housing here. I did attend the homeless seminar, and I've noticed that there are a number of vacant lots here in Thousand Oaks. I live at the Oak Creek Senior Villas, right across the street from the Tarantula Brewing Company, and there's a lot there that may be half an acre in size. I don't know if it's private property and an individual already has a legal contract to do with the land as he wants to, but the city should do everything possible to see that every vacant lot here has... is going to be used for affordable housing. Kind of disturbed by a comment in the last couple of weeks in the Acorn about one gentleman, a resident near this acreage out in the north end of Newbury Park, where they may want to build either apartments or a commercial facility, but he doesn't seem to believe that people who can't afford to pay maybe $700,000 here for a home should be given the opportunity to live in affordable apartments around here, and I have one other comment for Chief Hagel. There's kind of a problem with tailgating on Moore Park Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so if your deputies could pay attention to some of these characters and issue citations, if it hurts bad enough, they won't do it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is David Ellis. David, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm here speaking about 2198 Moore Park in Thousand Oaks. I wanted to know what's the reason that you guys are rejecting to make a convenient store with a gas station over there?
Okay, we can answer that following. We'll have someone answer that question for you.
Okay, and I wanted to know as well, if there were going to be a gas station over there, would it be able to be without a mini mart? Are you guys willing to work something out like that, or are you guys opposed to having a service station there completely?
Again, we'll have somebody talk with you afterwards.
Oh, so this is...
Yeah, public comments are... Public comments is not on an agenda item, but thank you, sir. Mr. Powers, would you like to address that?
No, just as the council is well aware, the proposal for 7-Eleven at that location was denied by the Planning Commission and subsequently appealed to the City Council and was denied as well for that proposal. I see our Planning Division Manager Steve Kearns in the audience. If you wouldn't mind stepping out into the lobby and giving him a little bit more detail, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. That's it.
There you go, Mr. Ellis. All right, well, that concludes our public comments. We now come to consent calendar. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Move approval of the consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote, please?
The motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance amending sections of the municipal code adjusting campaign contribution limits to reflect changes in California Consumer Price Index, CPI, and setting reevaluation timeframe for base limit, ordinance number 1666 NS.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then with item 8B, will you announce the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8B, Extension of Interim Urgency Ordinance Regarding Moratorium on Approval or Issuance of Any Permit, License, or Entitlement Relating to Applications for Cultivation, Processing, Drying, Storing, and Manufacturing of Industrial Hemp and Non-Incidental Retail Sale of Products Derived from Industrial Hemp. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the Council and the official records should be presented to the Clerk prior to speaking, and at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you. Mr. Heer, if you wanted to take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So tonight, we are back to talk about industrial hemp. This is for your consideration to adopt an interim urgency ordinance extending the moratorium on new industrial hemp businesses in Thousand Oaks for up to 10 months and 15 days. Going back for just prior action, in September, this council adopted an interim urgency ordinance as permitted under Government Code Section 65858, declaring a moratorium on approval of any application or entitlement relating to cultivation, processing, manufacturing, sale, and other types of commercial handling of industrial hemp. Since that urgency ordinance was adopted, staff have continued to research the hemp industry, federal and state regulations, and possible city regulations on the industry. So again, going back to the moratorium, under 65858, a moratorium can last up to two years. The first stage was 45 days, which we are in at this moment. The next stage is 10 months and 15 days, and there is a third option to go for an additional one year for a total of two years. And again, the purpose of the moratorium is to place a hold at this time on approving further permits, issuing additional business license relating to cultivation and processing, drying, and storing, and non-incidental sales of CBD product. So what actions have we taken in the first 45 days? Well, we've met with Ventura County Agricultural Commissioners to discuss industrial hemp. As you know, the agricultural commissioner came to the last meeting and talked about his job and the job of his deputies. We went to meet with him and talked about cultivation. Interesting comments about it is certainly a booming crop, not just in Ventura County, but across the state, across the nation. Last time, I mentioned the 2018 Farm Bill, and in that Farm Bill, they approved also for Indian tribal nations to allow them to actually grow hemp as well. So it's really opened up the nation for growing this product and this crop. Another interesting comment from the commissioner is that a typical, again, acre of hemp harvested could equal seven to... 1600-pound bales of hemp, which is about 11,000 pounds. That's one acre. So 1,000 acres, we're looking at over 11,000 pounds of hemp that would be transported, assuming that you're gonna use the whole crop. In addition to talking to Ventura County Agricultural Commissioners, we worked with our consultants, HDL, on review of proposed federal and state regulations, and also our own regulations. We met with some local scientists regarding the use of THC-free CBD oil in R&amp;D work, and again, THC-free is CBD oil from hemp, not from cannabis. And we reviewed a recently published draft federal and state regulations regarding hemp cultivation. So in the staff report, we made a note that we're waiting for the state and federal guidelines to be published. They have just recently been published. They are now under public comment for approximately 45 to 60 days, and we are looking at those. I do need to note that in review of those, both federal and state standards, it mainly deals with cultivation, so it's really not addressing post-cultivation, such as manufacturing aspects of hemp, which is something we need to be careful when we regulate locally. And as I mentioned, with HDL's assistance, we have started the initial preparation of draft hemp ordinances, which we will bring back for your consideration. So the findings for the moratorium that we brought forth last time still remain. We are working hard to gather information. There is not a lot of information out there regarding regulations dealing with the manufacturing aspect, controlling such things as odor, safety, traffic devices, and traffic control for the number of trucks that might come to a city with hemp product. So it is important to note that we are working at that and trying to gather information from other agencies. There are a number of agencies in California, a lot of California counties, who have also adopted moratoriums on hemp, just because it is fast-moving as a preferred crop in our state. It also is important to remind council and the public that CBD oil from hemp and CBD oil from cannabis with THC have very... are very similar in product, and so it's very difficult to distinguish those two things, those two types of oil. And so that's important because the only way when we try to regulate those things is really to test it. Also, I want to point out, you might have read in the LA Times yesterday, there was a Kern County... in Kern County, their sheriff's office seized about 10 million marijuana plants being grown under the guise of industrial hemp, and the estimated street value of that cannabis or marijuana was $1 billion. And of course, when they did the testing, similarly to what Ventura County Agriculture Commissioners would do, they test for the THC levels, and these products, actually, the crops were way beyond the .3 limit that you would have to allow it to be considered hemp under the law. So all those plants were seized and destroyed. And I bring that up just to show you that it is a booming business, but also there's certainly opportunities for illegitimate action to be taken. As I mentioned briefly before, the Federal Department of Agriculture just released draft regulations for cultivation, and we're working on looking at reviewing those. The state of California, which is probably gonna be controlling for our city, has also released draft regulations. There is a public comment period that we will be monitoring as part of our due diligence. And again, we don't have regulations ready to go at this time, so we don't have... Without regulations, we frankly are unable to adequately or properly regulate the business, and this is a business that is, again, booming in the state and in the nation, and so we certainly have concerns about transportation impacts, safety impacts, odor impacts, other nuisance type of issues that we might have. And so we certainly want to take the time to ensure we have regulations that make sense and are adequate for our needs for our residents. Doing the outreach that we did, scientist, local scientist, and we talked about research and development and how they do use in developing new products, cosmetics and other types of lotions, minor amounts of CBD. I'm asking council to consider as part of the moratorium to exempt this use by the R&amp;D companies of CBD oil and testing. Again, these, when they are using the CBD oil, it's actually already modified and prepared, and they're having it shipped to them as any other product that they use in their formulas for their testing and their product development. Those kind of activities are done under strict research protocols, and so based on the information that we received, we recommend that the city exempt R&amp;D companies permitted to operate in Thousand Oaks from the manufacturing prohibitions identified in the moratorium, since they are only using minor amounts of previously processed THC-free CBD oil in laboratory settings. Under the authority of the Government Code Section 65858 authorized the City Council to adopt this moratorium. It does require a four-fifths vote. If City Council moves to extend, the moratorium will continue for 10 months and 15 days unless acted upon. City Council, as I mentioned before, also has an option to consider extending a second time for one additional year. However, what we plan to do frankly is to bring back, once we have some draft regulations that we can share with you, present to you, do that in a public setting, in a public meeting, to have you consider these new regulations regarding hemp. So next steps and recommendation, staff will continue to prepare hemp regulations and bring a draft back to City Council for discussion and possible adoption. Until those regulations are completed, we are recommending that council adopt this urgency ordinance with a four-fifths vote to extend the moratorium, an additional 10 months and 15 days if needed, and also to exempt the use of minor amounts of THC-free CBD oil from R&amp;D testing and development of products. And that's it for my presentation tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the... Most of the information you've given us so far has to do with cultivation and harvesting. Do you not have any information on how it's currently being processed in other counties, or can you fill us in?
Right, so, believe it or not, we've actually gone out of state to look at other states and how they have tried to regulate the post-harvesting aspect of it. I will tell you that there are a lot of states, and I'm not picking on them in any ways, just that that's the nature of their state, such as Kentucky, where they have all this open farmland, and so they're doing the processing and part of the manufacturing aspect at the site, next to the fields, if you will. In Ventura County, my understanding is Ventura County agricultural land is so limited as to what you can do on the land, so therefore, they can't have things like a processing plant on agricultural land. So that's one of the challenges, I think, our county is gonna be facing, is that agricultural, when it's zoned agricultural land, it has very specific uses, and other uses are prohibited, and that's kind of the challenge that we're facing. So we are looking for that, because what we're trying to do is find good regulations that talk about conditions for odor control. How big of a... Is your plant gonna be, for example, for drying? Is it 30,000 square feet of a drying facility? How many types of mitigation odor controls do you have to have in that facility to make sure that the odor doesn't escape the building? For the drying aspect, is it gas dryers? Is some type of other technology being used? What are best practices that we can ask a applicant to employ as part of the conditions for getting an approval or getting a permit for that? We talked about trucking. I gave you just a brief example of the... How much product comes just from one acre, and we have thousands of acres in Ventura County alone, and they're trying to find a place to truck that. We're talking of hundreds of truck trips by large vehicles coming into, for example, our city, as an example, and where are they gonna park? And where are they gonna stack? And how do they get rid of their... You know, drop their product off? And all those kind of things that, again, I'm not saying we won't do that, it's just more of what are best practices to regulate that? So that has been practically... Really, the biggest challenge is post-harvesting. There's not really much out there that we're finding. We're working on it, and we have our consultant working on it as well.
Yeah, I don't see much land in Thousand Oaks to be growing hemp, but the... Most of us who have been in the other areas have noticed the odor and that sort of thing, so I am sensitive to that. I don't think we would want to allow that to affect neighbors. The other point of clarification I would like to have is on the R&amp;D. You mentioned that R&amp;D, and I think we all know that that's research and development of different products. Would those companies be able to manufacture in bulk once they get a product that they like?
Well, in talking to the scientists that I've talked to, they're in the early stages. Right now, it's prohibited under our moratorium, and so they're in the starting process to come into our city. They haven't come into our city yet, and so it's really to start that research process and then start developing. That's a long process to deal with before they actually start doing mass production for sale, because they have to get many of those things actually qualified for the product to have consistent testing, for example, and that's part of the research and development aspect. So we think we would have regulations for that type of facility type of work by the time we get... Within a year, we should have that in place.
So our moratorium then would preclude someone from manufacturing products right now?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I just, out of curiosity, would like to ask, are we expecting truck traffic for hemp to be different from truck traffic from harvesting strawberries?
I don't have to answer that question, because I don't know what kind of truck trips they have for strawberries. I think the concern is that we... You don't have a strawberry plant. I'm not aware of a strawberry plant in Thousand Oaks that would handle that type of product. And so again, it's... The concern that we had is we had information that there might be some type of manufacturing in our city, drying of hemp in our city, and we just really weren't prepared to how to regulate that properly. We were certainly concerned that they would bring in a number of trucks. We weren't sure how many, and then we have the complaints of the noise, the odor, the stacking of vehicles. It would probably be in an industrial zone, so M1 zone, which again, has its own issues with traffic. Those were the concerns.
Thank you.
Well, there is... There are no public speakers in relation to this, so Madam Clerk, if you'd close the hearing?
Hearing is now closed.
Council discussion? Mayor Protam Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. To me, this is a good, common-sense step to take here for the city. I mean, keep in mind that there's been a request for a huge amount of warehouse space to bring hemp in and dry it, and as Mr. Heer very eloquently put, we don't know the consequences of this as far as transportation, as far as odor, and all the different problems that could occur. CBD oil, there's been a request for a number of shops on T.O. Boulevard. We don't know about what that proliferation could mean, and I know for a fact, the CBD oil has been tested, and a lot of times, it doesn't meet the quality standards that are supposed to be there. And just anecdotally, I don't know about you guys, but I'm getting comments from people in Santa Rosa Valley that they've got that skunk odor of hemp drifting into their cities or their area. It's not a city, but their area. So there's just a lot of questions. We need time to look at the positive and negative impacts, so this makes a lot of sense to me. So if there's any other comment, I'll move 9B.
I welcome it.
Hold it 8B.
8B.
To extend the moratorium.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an interim urgency ordinance, extending ordinance number 1665 NS, which declared a moratorium on the approval or issuance of any permit, license, or entitlement relating to applications for the cultivation, processing, drying, storing, and manufacturing of industrial hemp, as well as non-incidental retail sale of products derived in any part from industrial hemp, ordinance number 1667 NS.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item 9A, Civic Arts Plaza Campus Master Plan Ad-Hoc Committee Update. Mr. Powers, our city manager, why don't you take over?
Thanks so much, Mayor McCoy. It's my pleasure to make just a couple of opening comments tonight. This is an item of significance, and I felt it was important just to frame it a little bit. Our pleasure to be here tonight to present an update on the campus master plan, as the council is well aware. This is one of your top 10 priorities for the year, and so we've been focused on delivering this initial report. But stepping back a little bit, it's, I think, of value to remind everyone, whether they have been in the community for a long time or relatively new. For the better part of two decades, residents and businesses have been consistent in their desire to see a downtown at our city's center. In 2018, the City Council took a major step towards advancing this community desire. In 2018, the City Council took a major step towards advancing this community desire by refining its focus to city-owned properties between Herbs Road and Conejo School Road. And that was, so it was coined the Downtown Core Plan. There was extensive community outreach that occurred through that plan, and it identified a number of key elements that were sought by residents. And just some of those to refresh your memory, and this, that report was attached to the staff report as well, to bring it back to front of mind. A central town square to host this community signature events, better connections between the performing arts venues and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and better connectivity between the West Side parcels, the Civic Arts Plaza, and the lakes. Overall improved pedestrian environment. And all of these things done without significantly impacting the traffic flow along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So a really unique challenge laid out with that as the concluding point. The initial concept plans that you're going to see tonight have been designed and refined with this resident feedback at their core. Mayor Protem Adam and Councilmember Builda Lepina, being the Campus Master Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, worked with staff and the consultant team on varying iterations over the past number of months. There's no question that these plans are bold, transformative, exciting, but still in their very formative stages. Bringing them to fruition in a balanced fashion will require civic will, along with innovative public-private and public-institutional investment. In anticipation of the resources needed to advance a bold vision, the City Council has already set aside significant capital resources towards this effort. You'll hear these during the presentation, but I think it's important to note a couple of things. These initial concept plans transform what is currently a quiet, contemplative acreage in front of the Civic Arts Plaza into a flexible and programmable multi-use zone at the city's core. They better connect our two large performing arts venues to the street level below, where they're currently disconnected today. They remove Thousand Oaks Boulevard traffic impacts by aligning a new, low-speed, pedestrian-friendly roadway that traverses the West Side in front of the Civic Arts Plaza and over to the lakes. They preserve and showcase some of the most majestic oak trees in our city. And you'll hear from the team this evening, that's been a real driving component of this plan, which is how do we showcase and preserve the amazing oaks that we have on this property? And not only demonstrate the latest in enhancement of preservation techniques, but be a proving ground for where they can be used by private sector development, other where, and other places in our community. And they repurpose aspects of City Hall spaces, which don't function as well today as they might have been envisioned when opened 25 years ago, and increase economic vibrancy, nonprofit opportunity, and municipal services. And finally, they provide ample parking as to allow for programming and business across the property. What's before you tonight is not just simply another plan. We've had a lot of plans over the last couple of decades discussed and kicked around, but it really is demonstrable progress towards realizing the community's long-held desire for a downtown. With that, I want to pass it over to Deputy City Manager Gary Rogers, who's been helping to head up this effort, along with our consultant team, for a couple of comments and introductions of the consultants.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McCoy, members of the City Council. Before we begin tonight, I wanted to briefly talk about the steps we've taken to get where we are today. Back in early 2017, the City Council established a downtown revitalization ad hoc committee and endorsed the recommendation to solicit proposals for the development of a master plan for the downtown core. The consultant team of Ramey and Associates was selected and engaged the community through a variety of outreach efforts, and they were working to try to identify the elements that should be incorporated into that downtown core master plan. In addition to extensive community input, feedback, and endorsement of the master plan was received by the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, the Cultural Arts Commission, and the Planning Commission, and ultimately, the City Council in June of 2018. One of the first steps of the downtown core master plan was to work on the development of the Civic Arts Plaza Campus Master Plan. A request for proposal and qualification was issued in August of 2018 for a consultant team to work with the city to prepare the master plan, the campus master plan. On January 8, 2019, AECOM was retained to further explore the redesign of the Civic Arts Plaza campus, the West Side properties, the creation of a town square, and the redesign of City Hall. As the city manager has mentioned, the City Council also established a Campus Master Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. That committee met with AECOM on several occasions to explore design options and ultimately endorsed a Main Street concept, which is well-aligned with the downtown core master plan and that integrates direct public feedback. I would like to introduce Bob Levy, Vice President and Regional Managing Principal of AECOM and his team, who are with us tonight to share the preliminary design concepts for the Civic Center, the Civic Arts Plaza Campus Master Plan.
Great, thanks, Gary. Mayor McCoy, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks for having myself and my team, Mark McVeigh and Mark DeLuvrier. Both will be speaking this evening to different aspects of the plan. Real quickly, on the agenda for the evening, covered introductions pretty quickly there, but I will say a bit more about AECOM, in that we are a multidisciplinary firm that does architecture, urban design, landscape architecture, transportation design, pretty much everything you could ever need. So we've been able to leverage our complete team and bear, bring to bear resources on this really exciting engagement with the city. So I think we've heard a bit already about why the Civic Arts Plaza is happening in this design. I'll touch on the background and concept development, Main Street and its key components, and then what's next, okay? So process to date, I think you've heard a good summary already on how long we've been engaged. We actually started this process in January or February of this year, and have had a number of meetings, both with the Steering Committee and the Ad-Hoc Committee as well, three of those with the Ad-Hoc Committee, too. And we're to point now to actually present and talk about a selected design direction. So back to the question, why the Civic Arts Plaza? And I'll just, I'll read a few of these slides here. An improved Civic Arts Plaza is a downtown core master plan priority, and this is one of the four critical actions as determined in the DCMP. Redesign the Civic Arts Plaza to be more active and connected, expand arts, cultural, and entertainment programming, create an entertainment and commercial destination, and improve walkability in the pedestrian environment. I think both Drew and Gary touched on pretty much all those same items as well in their And as we move through this process, actually, it started very early with stakeholder involvement, right? With interviews, pop-up events, focus group meetings, an open house, and online surveys. So we've channeled that input to help shape what you're going to see tonight. We also worked with the Steering Committee and the Ad-Hoc to further refine the important priorities for those groups, and so we knew when we arrived at an appropriate solution. And they looked at these three things, right? Civic, cultural, and placemaking items. And I'll read through these because we'll come back to these in a few minutes. In regard to civic, the cap will be Thousand Oaks True Civic Center, whose City Hall and other civic-supporting uses are functional, inviting, accessible, and interconnected. On cultural, the cap will be a regional hub and a local asset for cultural, entertainment, and art events, and amenities to draw Thousand Oaks residents and visitors from afar. And placemaking, the cap will be a viable, uniquely Thousand Oaks and a recognizable place with a variety of active uses that support the cultural and civic centers, activate the public realm, and frame a central town square for Thousand Oaks. So as we kind of confirm that with the group, we use those ways, those identifying factors to confirm that we're on the right path forward. In terms of concept development, our assignment is identified within the site boundaries on this slide here. The yellow dashed line indicates the area that we've been asked to focus in on, which includes the West Side properties off to the left, the Civic Arts Plaza, and then we've been aware of the lakes, obviously, it's not part of our scope of work, but we are working towards interconnection between all of those areas of the site plan. We also conducted a number of site surveys, from surveying the building, the parameters of the building, the site contours, the streets, and the trees. So pretty much everything on this entire property has been digitized and is part of our toolset as we've moved forward with the design. Looking at the Civic Arts Plaza, from our perspective, a couple of issues. The plaza is physically and visually detached. And the diagrams that you see in front of you here begin to paint the story, I think, of our assignment and the request from the city to really look at this closely, is to find ways to better engage the Civic Arts Plaza with its surroundings. Between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the freeway, it's about 670 feet, it's a deep property. The cap is situated kind of in the middle of that, so getting to it is a little bit of a challenge. The red boxes that you see that are indicated on the footprint of the building there are the entry points to your building. A little challenging to find sometimes. Wayfinding, vehicular access is limited, there's some other barriers on the north side as well, that I think are all impacting the way in which the community is using the facility as it currently stands. We've also used the survey information that we took to construct a three-dimensional model electronically of the entire site, and have cut sections through this site to begin to paint the picture of some of the challenges. You can kind of see them here in these cross-sections that show in the top drawing, the 101 freeway up to the right, Thousand Oaks Boulevard all the way to the left, and the sloping downward from north to south, and then back upward up to the theater. So all these natural components and the building design really have somewhat isolated the building from its city, surrounding it. The pedestrian circulation shown on this diagram also tells a bit of the story of the paths you do have to take to get into the building. It's not necessarily intuitive, and it doesn't bring the public in as easily as I think the city would like it to. We've also dug into site utilities, we have a good understanding of water lines, storm drain lines, and also the Red Line Channel, which is shown in the red lines on the north side of the site, which represents an easement that you can't build buildings upon, which also has impacts to where you do put buildings potentially on this site. Lastly, in terms of site conditions, this diagram begins to overlap all those different perspectives into one diagram that shows how these things are impacting each other across the entire site. Now, Mark DeLuvrier, our landscape architect, is going to talk a bit about the tree survey and the arborist report.
Good evening. From the start of this project, we understood the importance of these trees on this site. And that's why, in the very beginning, we brought in a number of arborists within AECOM that evaluated every single, every single tree on the site. There's well over 300 trees on the project. Each tree was reported on, documented, everything from the height to the canopy to the, just the general overall health of every tree on site, so we knew exactly what we were dealing with. So this diagram that you'll see right now is there's about 326 trees that have been categorized and outlined in the arborist report. One other quick thing I'll mention is that in the arborist report, we've actually established four groups of trees. We've broken them each down, so there's protected oaks, landmark trees, native trees, and non-native trees. Thank you.
Good evening. In addition to the tree study, we also looked at other factors affecting the site from the environment that it exists in, wind direction, climate conditions. We looked carefully at the solar orientation to make sure that we understood where to best take advantage of presence of sun and where we needed shade, and that the building facing north actually provides a really optimal condition for daylight facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And the buildings actually provide shade to the Main Street, the town square potentially. When we looked in a little more detail about the building, we noticed several fairly interesting disconnections between not only the cap building itself being separated from the street, but even within the cap itself, there are choke points and difficulty in wayfinding and moving around in the site. So the, if you've ever approached the theater from the parking structure, you'll remember that the Forum and the Cawley Theater actually come to almost a nexus in the, as you enter the third-level plaza. And that is just typical of the types of challenges.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't understand what you just said. Would you repeat that?
Sure. So when you approach the theater from the parking structure, the drop-off that's up on the top level of the plaza, the Forum, the auditorium we're in right now, comes very close to the corner of the tower of the theater. So that actually creates a visual block, so that you can't actually visually see easily into the third-level plaza.
From where are you?
From the drop-off. So right.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. So that's typical of the kinds of conditions that we found all array around the perimeter of the building. So as we began to study ways of approaching the master plan, we wanted to open up and try to correct some of those situations. When we looked then at the way that you move vertically in the existing building, there's an abundance of stairs and elevators. However, the link between them is very confusing and not very intuitive. So for example, in the corner of this building, there's a stair from the second level going down to the first level of the City Hall. You go outside to access that stair, and then you arrive outside the doors of the City Hall, and you have to re-enter the building in that situation. So those kind of conditions are the things where we would focus attention as we move forward to develop this project. One thing that we noticed very strongly was that the topography that moves up from Thousand Oaks Boulevard up to the 101 freeway creates an easy way to move across the site in the east-west direction. However, the movement from Thousand Oaks Boulevard up to the theater in particular, which should be a very straight line along this green line on the project, on the drawing, is not accessible, right? So you can't move from the ground at Thousand Oaks Boulevard up to the third floor, the third-level plaza directly on the outside. So we thought that that was a unique opportunity to try to create a better access and actually a proper front door for the cap.
So I'll dive into, I'll circle back to the parameters I talked about earlier. It may be hard to read, and the slide is a little bit small, but with the Steering Committee and the Ad-Hoc, we defined the path to success, right, through certain types of achievements in the plan. So we use those particular items in this to grade us, to make sure that... So we use those particular items in this to grade us, to make sure that we're accomplishing the goals established early on before we even put pen to paper. And so this is identifying the success rate for the Main Street Plan. There were other plans that we did investigate, but this is the one that the ad hoc and the steering committee selected to proceed with. And the good news in this kind of scorecard is that this really accomplished almost all of them with a green indication, which is good. Yellow is medium, and red is not so good. So we avoided all the reds and mostly green, which was a good indicator for us about the success of this plan. And I'll circle back to Mark for a moment here too, just to talk a bit about what really started, I think, the design around this area, which is focused on celebrating Thousand Oaks and the oaks within the city.
So it was very clear when we started on this project that the oak trees are the biggest asset to this project. There's such value that comes out of these trees, and we really wanted to, and that's kind of what makes this site so unique, is that the trees are just so, you know, they're mature. I've worked on a lot of projects, and I've never worked on a project with such large trees that would be maintaining and preserving. And that's why throughout the entire concept, you know, we really wanted to make, you know, come up with this idea, but it's really about living within the oaks. It's about really bringing the community into the plaza and have them experience, you know, the oak trees. Thank you.
It's great to have Mark talk about the oak trees, because he's a landscape architect, he's very passionate about what they bring to this project, as we all are. So diving into then the Main Street Plan, I'll highlight the overall parameters that went into the current plan that you see in front of you. The first one really is the creation of the Main Street, and you've heard a little bit about that from Drew and Gary, but this is probably the backbone, if you will, of this whole plan that makes everything else possible, this spinning around it. And it runs the entire length of our study site, right, from the west property all the way over to the lakes, and it becomes a new connection that doesn't currently exist. It allows the public to come right up close to your Civic Arts Plaza in a way that doesn't currently exist either. It also adds some new connection points, or actually ties them together in a different way. Right in the middle, you can see Dallas Drive is the middle entry point that connects to a drop-off, and then you turn left or right to go down the yellow path there, which is the circulation down the Main Street. It improves, I'll kind of go through some of the factoids here, it improves connection between cap, West Side, and the lakes. It actually also links together a new, potential new parking structure to improve traffic flow and provide parking for new development that's in this area. Internal Main Street and Lakes reduces traffic impacts on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Actually got some feedback from our traffic engineer that the addition of this low-speed pedestrian-oriented Main Street will reduce traffic from 5,000 down to 4,714 trips counts daily, which was one of the goals as well, to keep traffic off Thousand Oaks and really provide a slower, better experience on the cap. In terms of pedestrian circulation, that is one of the prime ways of moving through the Main Street. We're trying to create a place that people want to be, and that pedestrian traffic is chosen over vehicular traffic. We're also connecting, like I said, towards the east to the lakes, and also trying to make sure we're engaging that property as well and continuing activity across the Main Street. In terms of building configurations, what we're currently looking at is a variety of different types of buildings that could be placed along the Main Street. We may modify or relocate portions of City Hall, depending on how the rest of the design continues to develop. It does create an entertainment, dining, and retail district, which will be, I think, one of the vibrant parts of this new development. The West Side property is programmed for institutional, so looking for partners to work with the city in occupying part of that property as well. But really, the commercial components that are scattered throughout these buildings really was activating the downtown core. A key component of the downtown core master plan and the cap is to create a town square. And that kind of purple kind of oval you see on this diagram highlights where that town square would be located. It extends from the cap and connects down to the Boulevard. It also provides a centralized and activated civic district that is programmable, usable for different types of performances, assemblies, and other such engagements.
So you'll see right here, we have a tree preservation plan, and all the trees on this plan are what we're currently preserving and celebrating on site. The idea is that we will not only preserve these trees, but we're also going to integrate these trees into the, integrate the existing trees into the design. And we'll be doing that a number of different ways, that I'll get into it a little bit later. We've actually gone as far as actually moving roads and loading docks in order to sort of keep and maintain as many, and preserving as many trees as possible on the site. And then we've also gone as far as very advanced construction techniques, which would allow us to sort of integrate sort of the ground plane and the design with the existing oak trees, especially in the front portion of the project. Now I'll get a little bit into the street. We feel that due to the building, due to the existing building and how far that building is sort of set back and recessed into the site, that the success of the site will really depend on the integration of a shared street and bringing a street in front of the cap. And there will be, this street, it would be a very low speed, and it'd also have a lot of, it'd be mostly multi-use, which would allow for the community to really engage in the street, so it would allow for both cars and pedestrians. And it would also help really arrive at the project's front door, which is the grand staircase. The street would be curbless and could be shared by both pedestrians and cars. There could be potential street parking. Lanes could be closed for community events, and then both commercial on both sides of the street would also help embrace that street. And then also the sustainability aspect of the project as well, and there would be permanent paving, rain gardens, and green infrastructure. We really want this project to promote visibility and accessibility to all the commercial tenants as well. So this next slide really kind of gives you an idea of what we're thinking about, about this street. It's not a gigantic, large street, it's, you know, quite narrow. It would be, like I said, curbless, it'd really allow for the community to engage on this as well as the building itself. So it's really supposed to feel like, there's no, streets sometimes feel very separated from one another, and this is supposed to be more integrated. And that's what that image on the top right, or sorry, in the middle, shows. And then there's three other images below, and those are just other examples of how the community has been sort of utilizing streets in order to get more usable community So now for the town square and amphitheater. So one of the biggest, sort of, one of the ideas is really try to integrate a town square with an amphitheater. And this town square would actually extend from the Civic Arts Plaza building all the way to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, really opening up and allowing for visibility into the plaza and for people to naturally sort of flow into the main space. One of the biggest aspects of this, and this is where I kind of talk about the integration of the existing trees, is that we would, that this plot, this town square would also actually extend underneath the existing trees using advanced, using advanced construction techniques as sort of, and I'll get into that momentarily, is how we bridge over those trees. This would, the reality of all of this is that it would allow for seating under the oak trees to occupy and activate, you know, unused space. So this is sort of, you know, when people come to the site, we want them to be able to relax beneath the oak trees, and this is sort of images of what we feel that the space could be like and how the space could be utilized underneath. And I think it also gives these trees more of a, you know, they serve a purpose now, but I think, you know, people really get an amazing appreciation for them once they're actually under them. These trees, these canopies are so large that they're almost like a, you know, they're like a structure almost, a natural structure. So tree impact, so there's two ways that we're handling the, sort of the conflicts with the trees and how to, and then also maintain space underneath them. And the two ways we're sort of mitigating that is, one, sort of creating elevated decks. And these decks would basically extend through the canopy of the trees, not touching or damaging really any of the root structure below. This would really allow for people to use the space under them, but also not damage any of the tree underneath them, so we wouldn't be actually hurting the root zones. And then the other, the other piece of technology would, you know, planter walls, so we would actually go way beyond the canopy of the trees, and we would plant, or we would install planter walls, which would allow us to excavate around the tree without hurting any of the root zone. So this next image really is just some examples of how we're using decks to create space underneath existing trees. And then these are some examples of sort of planter walls or planters used on existing trees to sort of preserve the root zone underneath the drip line, and then how the grade beneath or outside of that can then be adjusted without any implications to the tree. And this is another example of sort of what the feeling would be like underneath there. Thank you.
So what's really exciting about this process is the way we're imagining the transformation of the Civic Arts Plaza. So this is kind of a comparison, existing condition and proposed, side by side. And you can see the amount of connection in the main stairway that runs up from the town square that Mark just spoke about, all the way up to the third level to provide a really generous and graceful access point into the theater to celebrate the arts. So a view, again, from kind of aerial shot, comparing side by side area of the proposed and existing. What's really tremendous to imagine is that this building is a fairly discreet and interesting object, sitting far away from Thousand Oaks Boulevard. However, when you're near it, it doesn't really provide you much activity, much excitement, much generosity toward, especially the theater arts, the performing arts. So a vision that we had is to try to open up the Cawley Theater to the north, and again, as I mentioned, because it's facing north, the heat exposure, the generation of thermal heat gain isn't really a problem with north-facing exposure. But we feel like that can really showcase and put on display the pre-imposed performance movement of visitors to the theater in a really significant way, and create kind of a lantern, if you will, for that experience. So this is how we're proposing to create that stair, moving up from the Thousand Oaks Boulevard level on the left, through a grand stair that is in itself kind of an amphitheater facing back toward the town square, and then arriving finally up at the third floor, the third level plaza, right, to enter the theater. This is a view from that third level plaza, looking back down the stair, and really excited about the character and the opportunities for gathering that a stair like this could provide to really draw people into the downtown core and make this Civic Arts Plaza really the heart of the center. Another opportunity, we think, is to use the tower that exists on the theater as kind of a wayfinding device. By backlighting it or treating it in a special way, we think that it can really draw attention and become a reference point as you move around the site. So moving back down to the street, the view of really this new entry, this invitation to arrive at the Civic Arts Plaza, celebrating movement, celebrating gathering, celebrating the town. And then back down to the street, the variety of activities that could occur there, outdoor cafes, gathering points, you could close down the street and have farmers' markets, et cetera, but it really offers an enormous amount of potential. And then finally, looking from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, sort of the renewed image of creating a town square that goes from the curb line of Thousand Oaks all the way to the Civic Arts Plaza, rolls out the carpet in a way for the performing arts. And then a view of a proposal or a thought about creating shade over an amphitheater in the town square.
Thanks, Mark and Mark. So this is where we conclude our presentation. I'll focus in on a couple of things that I think are really important. You know, the Main Street is something that is connecting east to west and binding your west and east sides of the property together through a really welcoming, exciting, vibrant city center, if you will, one that brings the public right up to your cap, which is a fantastic facility here. And we're really excited in the way in which this, we're bringing the city right here to the cap, right, and visitors, making it easy to move from the new Main Street right up the pathway, the stairs that Mark talked about, up to the theater. We think it becomes a really vibrant downtown core, right, that you don't currently have, and really changes, I think, what you offer your residents and visitors from afar to participate, both at the Main Street and to enjoy these fantastic performance arts components of your cap, so.
So thank you, Bob. Council, just to reaffirm tonight, we're hoping to get some feedback on this preliminary campus design. We are recommending the endorsement of the Main Street concept, and that AECOM be directed to prepare a comprehensive report and conceptual plans for site grading, roadway orientation, architecture, and landscaping, and the interior campus layout. It's really important to note that that plan and those concepts will change and evolve as we begin our discussions and continue our review. We're asking you to direct staff to initiate formal outreach with our key stakeholders and partners, including institutional and our business partners. We're also asking that you direct staff to continue to explore that comprehensive design mix that is well-aligned with the established objectives of the downtown core master plan and the Main Street concept that has been shared tonight. And lastly, we're asking that you direct staff to initiate a thorough review of financing options for various aspects of the campus master plan, including site prep, capital infrastructure improvements, and discussions with potential public and private partners. With that, we'd be happy, I know AECOM and city staff would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. As the council's prepared to ask questions, I would just simply point out that putting Councilmember Builda Lepeña and Mayor Pro Tem Adam on this committee, the two of you have come up with just a remarkable project. This is the first time I've seen it in its entirety, and I'm absolutely blown away. So many wonderful aspects to it, and I'm looking forward to the questions from the council. So council, are there any questions that you have for all who have gathered tonight to answer them?
Well.
Well, it looks like Councilmember Builda Lepeña beat you, Councilmember Jones, so go ahead.
That's typical.
Yeah. All right, Councilmember Jones, you've been given that opportunity.
Beauty before age here.
All right, back to you.
I thought you were the beauty.
My wife doesn't think so.
Thank you. I thank you for the compliments and credit, but this is really the result of months of collaboration and having experts work on this, namely AECOM. of months of collaboration and having experts work on this, namely ACOM and, and your team, Bob, Mark and Mark. And so what we have here tonight, as was already stated by our city manager, is, is a concept. And this is our first rolling out to the community, because we do need the community's feedback. And so when we do reach out to stakeholders, obviously, we must include regular residents as well. And so I know that that will, will happen as well during our rollout. The question I have is regarding the town square and the amphitheater so close to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Thousand Oaks Boulevard is a pretty busy street. Traffic shouldn't go faster than 35 miles an hour, but that's not the case. And so we were wondering, I was wondering how we would buffer the, the traffic noise coming in when we have performances in, in the town square.
Mark, should I panel?
Great, great question. So we've done extensive audio testing. So essentially, we, we brought someone out onto the site that tested all of the, the sound. We were all, we're actually more concerned about the, the freeway noise, but it actually seems to be not a problem at all because of the building. And believe it or not, the, the testing of the sound would happen throughout all different parts of the day, and we basically got regular levels. So we don't feel that because of the positioning and the location of the amphitheater, we don't feel that the, the noise off of Thousand, Thousand Oaks Boulevard would actually have much effect on the performances. But that doesn't mean that we still can't provide, as we go on further, for, for other design additions that could help mitigate more of that as we move forward.
Thank you. And anticipating questions from community members as we reach out to our residents. Can the, the road, the main street, be just one-way?
I mean, it absolutely could be just one-way, yes. I think we've planned it right now to, to be two-way, so that as you move from west to east and you realize you've missed what you, where you wanted to go, that you can circle back around and go back in the other direction, rather than going back out to Thousand Oaks, going back to the west. But depending on the preference of the city, obviously, a one-way street would be a little smaller scale, maybe more pedestrian-focused, and that's definitely something that could work as well.
And it's a good opportunity, because we were having a conversation earlier about this. For the council tonight, the main focus, while it's a, it's a broad concept, a lot to digest, is on the fundamental elements, which is a roadway component, for instance, stairway connectivity and those things. The part of the direction tonight will be directing us to move forward with site grading and some deeper level analysis that will very likely dictate what's able to happen within those, those areas. So that's where the evolution of this will come after, after the direction from the city council tonight and further dictate road alignment and those types of things.
Correct. And so when we get a question from community members, do we need that many buildings on campus? Is it a little bit too dense? Is it, is it just fine? Is that something that is adjustable?
You know, I'd say that everything is adjustable. I think the balance that we struck here was providing enough opportunity for commercial use that would make this a destination, while still providing the open space and that balance with the trees. And so I think that pendulum can swing, you know, to more density or, or less density, of course, depending on the city's direction.
And then my third and final question for now is the trees. What is the percentage of landmark trees, not necessarily all trees, but landmark trees that are being preserved?
I'll look to Mark for that answer.
Great question. Currently, we, with this design, we've been able to maintain and preserve 83% of the trees on-site.
That's a very good percentage.
Of a collective, collective.
That's all trees, not just landmark trees?
Correct. That's just, that's all trees.
83%.
Yep.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, just to follow up on that last question, how many, one problem, talking about percentages, we like to think in terms of, you know, real things. How many oak trees are we going to be losing?
I mean, I think that really depends on honestly the, the final, the final design that we have. But currently, we are looking at a total of 13, 13 oak trees. However, these oak trees are not in the main portion of the project. That doesn't mean they don't have any significance. But if you look to the lower left-hand side of the site, where we have the existing garage, there is a lot of, like, sort of, like, unkept, more of naturalized trees there. And in those trees, in that area, there's where we're finding, there's roughly about 13 trees that are.
And what are the, you say you've made a detailed study of each tree. What category are these trees in? Are they small, large?
No, they're, they're protected oak trees. They're all, we all put them all in one category, so that they, they vary. Anything over two inches in size is, would be considered a protective oak tree. So this tree, the trees that I'm talking about could be four inches in DBH. It could be 27 inches in DBH. However, the, the majority of those trees that are, the majority of those trees that are, that are in jeopardy or conflict are on the lower left-hand side. Oh, DBH is diameter at breast height. So it's where they actually take the measurement around the tree. It's at breast height.
Well, I understand. I was very glad to hear right at the end of the, your presentation that this is going out for public comment. Is that correct? Everything that we've seen tonight?
Yeah, there'll be levels of stakeholder engagement, Councilmember.
I see. I mean, I don't know all the steps involved until we come to a final decision, but I just would like to know in a little more detail what trees we're losing. And I presume I can find that out in the, in the upcoming period. You know, a, a basic question that occurs to me, and I'd like to thank the committee, Councilwoman Builda La Peña and Mayor Pro Tem Adam for doing all this work with you and compliment your group. It seems to me, if you want a fundamental question, that is, do we need or want to create such a dramatic transformation of our current Civic Arts Plaza slash government center? I, I believe that what you've done so far with the concurrence of the two of our council members would give one the impression that that basic question has been answered in the affirmative, that we see, at least at this point, that this is a desirable change. Now, I don't know what extent of comment you want here tonight, since we're going to go into a period to allow the general public to make comments.
This is basically for, for questions, Councilmember.
Yeah, so I, I won't go into further comments, but I think that is a basic question the public would want to answer. You know, and I appreciate all the steps that you've taken concerning your three categories of civic, cultural, and whatever the third one was. What was the third one?
It was place-making.
Place-making.
Yeah.
Place-making.
Place-making.
Place-making. Okay. I don't know if I understand that, the third concept particularly, but I'm sure I'll have it explained to you. What, what is that concept exactly, place-making?
I mean, it's, it's the creation of a place that is unique, has character, and is a draw, a place that you want to be that has its own identity and is unique.
Well, I think we have that now, but this would be a different kind of place, obviously.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing. I, I do like the fact that you don't appear to be inhibiting traffic on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. When I first heard of the idea a year ago when I was a candidate, the concept of a downtown area had some drawbacks for me in that I thought it was going to straddle with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And it, because surveys have shown that people don't want to see Thousand Oaks Boulevard traffic inhibited, and this, of course, what you're doing with putting it all on the south side of the T.O. Boulevard, it seems to me probably would have the effect of lessening traffic. I mean, I don't know if that's true or not.
It is. It is true.
But I would just say that I appreciate all the work that's been done. And since Mr. Mayor, we're just making preliminary comments tonight, I'll leave it there and wait to be further educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Well, I have more of a statement. Maybe Councilmember Angler would like to go with some questions.
Councilmember Angler?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a couple of quick questions and a thanks to our council members who were on this committee, and also to staff and our consultant. Nice presentation tonight, and I, for what, I'm excited. This looks like a very forward-thinking project. I'm, I'm pretty excited by it. So, but one question I have concerning the, the space, the amphitheater space, in term, I, I don't have a good feel for how big you're looking at there. Are we talking 1,000 people can sit there, 2,000, 500? What, what size are we thinking?
No, not, not, not nearly that much. It, you know, it's a, it's a, a public gathering amphitheater space, and I would say it's roughly around, I'd say 70, 70 feet long by about 50 feet deep. So it's, it's, it's significant, so you could certainly have like local community, like local bands, things like that, perform. It certainly will be, you know, designed in a way that will, will allow for the presence of, of, of performance, but it won't, it will not be, you know, like, it won't be like the Hollywood Bowl, for instance, right? You know, it'd be much smaller than that.
The, we do have concerts in the park, as Councilmember Builda La Peña says. We'd sometimes get up to 4,000 or 5,000 people. That would not be an appropriate use for that space then?
Correct, yeah. I don't, I don't think we were looking at, you know, something that large.
Thank you.
That being, that being said, I think from an event and gathering standpoint, the town square as a whole and the ability to close the roadway would provide ample amounts for very large-scale events, correct?
Correct.
And then just a, a general comment. I'm sure most of the landmark trees, both oaks and other trees, are slated for, for preservation. I know you've, you've used some of your, your magic to make sure that the road doesn't take any out?
Correct. So the, the current location of the road actually is very specific to the location of trees. And so the, the road actually is working its way, meandering to avoid trees as much as possible. The, you know, what makes this project, I think, the most unique is this, the, the typical, the way we went about this approach. You know, we looked at the trees as, as what we cannot touch, and how do we create space and form space without trying to danger these trees and to keep them intact as much as possible? It wasn't the easiest thing to do, but I think we accomplished it quite well with this. And that's why, you know, this current road alignment, you'll notice actually as it works its way east, it actually, it actually basically breaks off, right? And it kind of, and it kind of gets a little narrower in order to avoid a lot of the impact of the trees as it makes its way toward the lakes.
Just another general comment. I think being able to incorporate those trees and have people really be able to enjoy them, I think is a nice feature of what you've presented. I hope we can retain that.
Me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Builda La Peña?
Yes, I know we, thank you, Mayor McCoy. I know we have a few speakers. I just wanted to restate or reiterate that the reason we're here tonight with such a proposal is because we ask a very fundamental question, namely, is the Civic Arts Plaza, as we see it today, really inviting to the public? Is it a destination? And after having lived here for many, many years, I have to say the answer is no. It is not open and inviting. And in order for Thousand Oaks to really maximize our Civic Arts Plaza, which is the jewel of our community, and to create a downtown destination, we need to change it. I know that there are going to be comments about, well, our downtown is the Oaks Mall or the Janes Mall. And, and yes, those are commercial centers, but we are looking for a place that actually puts us in a mood of belonging. Is this our home? And my hope is that once we flesh out this concept, that we will have created something that we can all call home.
Thank you very much. Great insight.
Good point.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, are you prepared, or do you want to wait till?
Yeah, I could make a statement if I, if I may. Yeah, having served on both of the committees that got us here where we are tonight, I would stress that we, this is a conceptual plan at this point. And, you know, we didn't want to get bogged down in too much of the specifics this evening. And to add on to what Claudia says, yeah, we definitely need a place here in Thousand Oaks. Ray Olson knew that back in the 80s, when he said, "We need a place." And kudos to the city council that actually got this place built, and was under many daunting circumstances. But here we are 25 years later, and now it's time to step back and look at this place that we created and bring it up to, and, and look at where it's going to go in the next 25 years, bring it up to the times. And it's just been amazing, this process that we've gone through. It's been a process of revelation and realization. I mean, we started with a specific plan on the Boulevard that looked at three miles of a Boulevard. We realized that was a little too big of a bite, so we narrowed it down to Canejo and, between Canejo and Herb's Road. And even then, we realized the city only owned 50% of that property, so we narrowed it down even further to, to the campus that we sit on right now. And that's what makes this actionable, because we own this property. We can work with it. We're not reliant on private property owners, and hopefully they'll join in as we go. But this is something we can do as a city. And it meshes beautifully with the campus master plan that we took a long time to create. We get, we get a town square. And let me just backtrack for a second. When you talk about public outreach, we've done a lot of public outreach on this already, and the response has been phenomenal. We're getting a response rates of approval anywhere from the mid-60s to the mid-70%. That's, that's huge for everything like, that we, that we need a downtown, that we need an entertainment district, that we need to expand programming here, that we need to develop the west side. These are things that people all strongly agree on, that we need to have shopping and restaurants, that we need to have walkability, pedestrian-friendly environment. 65, 70, 75% of the residents have said just that. So, you know, I think it's up to us to create that. And you look at some of the things that we're talking about here, the town square, highly approved of, a grand staircase to connect the, the Civic Arts Plaza to, to the, to the main street. And, and speaking of the main street, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is not going to be our main street. It's just not. It's got four lanes, it's got a median, and it's got two lanes of parking. It's really seven lanes. And it's just, as we have said over and over again, cars drive down it quickly, people want the access to stay open. The beauty of this plan, it creates an alternate main street, a small main street, 10-foot lanes either way, people go 10, 15 miles an hour, gives us the ability to close it if we want. We could never close T.O. Boulevard without a lot of public ire. Now we could close this little street that we're creating, make a paseo out of it if we need it, for a farmer's market, whatever. A lot of versatility with that street, connects the whole area. It's fantastic. It's a real multi-use. We're showcasing our oaks, primary concern of the oaks, Claudia will tell you that. We, we want to visit our, get to know your oaks, right? And this will enable us to, that we can sit under the oaks. Look at these pictures, they're incredible. Sit under the oaks on a Sunday afternoon and enjoy, enjoy. And people just aren't doing that now. But this will enable us to do that. So, you know, it's crucial, this is crucial to the sustainability of our theaters and to the sustainability of our city as a whole. Yet folks, we got to either innovate or stagnate, and so I say innovate. And let me, without getting too long-winded here, I'm sorry, Mayor, but I got to bring up this one point that nobody's really talked about, but I think it's really essential. We are an aging community here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Back in 1970, the median age was, what, 22 years old, right? Here we are, 2019, what's the median age? 43. We've, 20 years in the last 50. The average median age in Ventura County is 36. So we're above that. 25% of our populations are seniors. So what, what does that mean? And in Ventura County, we've got 200,000 people that are over the age of 65. What does that mean? That means we have to attract young people to this city. We have to continue with a tax base that can support the essential services that we need, and the seniors that are growing every day. and the seniors that are growing every day. Believe me, I'm one of them. So this downtown is, it's really more than a gathering place. It's a way to sustain the city because young people will be attracted to this downtown. I can tell you this, one of our priorities is create a biotech hub, right? I've met with Westlake BioPartners that is bringing startup biotech companies to our city. The average age of kids working for those companies, you know what it is? Thirty. Thirty. They want a place like this. And Westlake BioPartners and other companies like this need a place to recruit to. And this is part of the way to bring these kids here and have them stay here and not end up in San Francisco or San Diego. So this is really important to our economy. Really important. Okay, I'm getting wound up here, but as you can tell, I'm pretty excited about it because it's so important on so many levels, so many levels. We'll hone it down. We'll get it right, believe me. We haven't put in all this effort to come up with something that doesn't work. And we're going to get more public input, and it's going to be great ultimately, and we're going to be able to do it. So the, the, the public wants a downtown. The city needs a downtown. It's up to us now to get the wheels in motion, get that done, so people can, people aspire to live in this city. They want to live here. Young people want to live here. This will give them just one more reason to want to move to Thousand Oaks and help sustain our city.
Well said, Mayor Protam.
Oh, boy.
As we prepare to go into public comments, the only thing I would add is, after, I mean, we're coming up to the one-year anniversary of the borderline shooting. And what was evident following the shooting, within 16 hours, we had the fires. Folks didn't know where to gather. We, we crowded on a corner where crosses were put. Became a traffic hazard. People needed to mourn. They had no city center. God forbid anything like that ever happen in our city again. But had we had this location at that time, it would have been filled with the community. I can see in the future this being the heart of the city. The work you've done, and I just, again, I want to commend the two of you because having the two of you on this committee with a love for the arts, a love for the environment, and a love for this city manifesting itself in what was presented tonight and what's going to ultimately come together fruition. I just, I'm grateful for the two of you. Thank you for all your efforts tonight. And with that, we'll go into public comments. Madam Clerk, do you have to announce public comments, or we just go right into them? So our first speaker tonight will be Rick Lemo, followed by Sean Maradian. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Rick Lemo, and I'm a 33-year resident of Newbury Park. Before I formally begin my comments, I am so excited to see what you have learned because what we've heard little bits and pieces of over the years, you really reestablished tonight, and you remembered every element of it. I respectfully ask you to frame my comments tonight with the knowledge that I may be one of the few people in the Andy Fox Council Chamber that has been intimately involved with this issue basically since the beginning, 23 years. In fact, I remember the times, you know, we changed the mayor every year, where every mayor would start out our business roundtable meetings by saying, "In regards to the Boulevard, the stars are aligned." Well, I think you put together the Milky Way tonight. Congratulations to Councilmembers Bill De La Peña and Adam for their leadership, guidance, and outreach with city management and staff to a variety of citizen and business stakeholders regarding the downtown core plan. Everybody was touched and asked for their opinion. I sat in many meetings where I certainly heard a lot of opinion, but I was concerned when biotech companies say, "Listen, we're interested in the quality of life. And we want our people to stay close to home and have their quality of life here instead of traveling outside of the area for their entertainment." As a former member of the Business Roundtable and founding member of the Business Improvement District and also one of the founding members of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, and being on the board of our Chamber of Commerce for over 30 years, which, by the way, unanimously voted to support this plan, I am also your next-door neighbor. I am grateful for the result of the work of council, ad hoc committee, and city staff for this plan. The plan before you begins where it is truly necessary to begin, in the center of town. The plan before you is beginning by focusing on a place that has minimal vehicular traffic. I happen to be a proponent of the one-way street. But also can be closed to traffic when you want to engage the public. And it's good to have a little bit of traffic on that street to help energize the area. Exceptional care has been devoted to saving virtually every heritage oak and celebrating them as a part of the city. I think AECOM has done a great job. I think it's really important that we've done, take note, that we've protected oak trees for a very long time. But if we made one mistake, we haven't really engaged with them. And this plan helps us engage with the tree that our city is named after. So I ask you to please support staff recommendation in Item 9A, number three, as well as in Items 9A, number four and five, as detailed in the report. And thank you so much for your time tonight and for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Lemo. Three minutes for each speaker. We have Sean Maradian, followed by Adam Haverstock. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Sean Maradian, lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks, president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. I'm here this evening to express our support, gratitude, and appreciation for bringing this campus master plan vision to this point. I know the ad hoc committee spent a lot of time and effort and diligence to this point. Mr. De La Peña, thank you very much for that. And Mr. Adams, thank you as well. I'd like to thank city staff and the consultant. There's been a lot of work, but, you know, clearly, there's a lot of work left to be done. And we look forward, on behalf of the association, to participate in any way we can, provide our expertise and provide any guidance as you get underway with this project. But it's undeniable that creating a sense of place here around this facility makes all the sense in the world. And you have our full support in doing that. So with that said, I want to thank you, and I look forward to seeing how this process evolves.
Thank you, sir. Adam Haverstock, followed by Jackson Piper.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam Haverstock, Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to start by thanking city staff and the consultants for including chamber members and chamber staff in the development of this initial plan. We are certainly in support of it. As Mr. Lemo mentioned, our executive committee voted unanimously to support this plan and move it forward. We've also had language in our legislative agenda for years in support of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan and development in that area. And this certainly fits in that category as well. We look forward to being engaged with the city and engaged with the consultant in the process of developing the additional details of the plan as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jackson Piper, followed by Ed Grip.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I'd like to start also by thanking the city council, members of the city staff, and AECOM. I think this is an excellent plan to start off with, and I look forward to seeing how it develops as community input is received. I also want to say that I have a lot of praise for what I've seen here. And I know what it's like to throw yourself into a project that you're passionate about and create a design you think is going to work for a lot of people and then have someone come up and start marking it and correcting it. So I apologize to the, especially to the folks from AECOM, if my comments seem to be a bit, well, make you feel a bit unpleasant. I don't mean to do that. My issues with the plan so far are basically, one, the roadway, which moves through the center of it. I think it's, it's great to have a street going through there. I am a little bit concerned about the car orientation still. Even though the presentation allayed some of my fears, makes it seem very much more pedestrian-oriented with some room for cars, I still feel like it's something that should be more of a pedestrian-only environment. That said, I will still be okay with it being limited access to vehicles as long as they're kept at a slow pace and don't really present any kind of a hostile environment for pedestrians. The other major issue I have with this plan, as it is conceived right now, is that the city of Thousand Oaks and the entire region of Southern California are currently in a housing crisis. And as I see it, this is a not-inconsiderable amount of space that could potentially be used to help with that crisis. I think the campus, as it's envisioned here, is great. I don't see any reason why a lot of these buildings could not have two to four stories' worth of apartments, condominiums, senior housing, mixture of whatever to provide more housing for anyone that needs it in the region, added on to them. And in fact, most of the nice pedestrian environments I've been in, in Europe and even some in the U.S., do tend to mix housing with shops and civic uses. This creates a built-in user base, a built-in group of people that are right on the site to keep eyes on the environment, to make sure everything's safe, and also to generate a lively civic environment. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Ed Grip, followed by Nick Kidway. Good evening, sir.
My name is Edward Grip, and I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 33 years. And I've been a practicing landscape architect and land planner for 60 years. And I'd just like to read the letter that I sent to you. It says, "Council members, I have lived in Thousand Oaks for 33 years and have been a practicing landscape architect and land planner for 60 years. The area in front of the civic center is, in my opinion, the most beautiful public space in Thousand Oaks. It must be preserved. The plan, as shown in the Acorn newspaper, would destroy the space and would replace it with commercial use. The proposed design would mix pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, on a narrow road which fails, falls short of being a town thoroughfare. The space is far too small to create, small to create a town center. The civic center is the cultural center of Thousand Oaks and will never be the town center. The town center is located between Moore Park Road and Lynn Road. It is true that the connection to the civic center, to the park area, is poor. The idea of removing the cascading planters and replacing them with a grand stairway has merit. I have enclosed, and I think you should have, pictures of the grand stairway in Los Angeles, which leads to the library. It's, it's pretty much what you want to do. It has a, escalators on each side to take care of older people like Ed Jones and myself."
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
So going on, it says, "If the area on the lower floor of the existing city hall is available for a restaurant, that would be a great asset to the park. The building could open onto a large dining and entertainment court. The court could host small musical groups and other artists. The artistic activities should be provided daily." And that's the problem. That's why the space is dead out there. We do not have any activities, and there are lots of people that would be happy to come down and play in the court while people eat. A good example of it is, any of you belong to Kaiser Permanente, and they go to Woodland Hills Hospital? You walk in into the, you walk into the reception area, there's a piano there, and volunteers play the piano, and it sets the whole mood for your visit to the hospital. If same thing could happen here. And I'm not totally, would not totally object to, like, having a small amphitheater or something like that. But we need to preserve that space as an open space and not a commercial space.
Thank you, Mr. Grip.
I'm completely against mixing, having a road go through there and mixed pedestrian traffic. And the road's only as wide as that red carpet there. In one place, it's 20 feet wide, it looks like to me.
Mr. Grip, your time's up.
Maybe it, maybe it goes to 28 feet wide in some places. That, that's far short of a main street going through a town. And I think that, I think introducing vehicular traffic in that area is a grave mistake.
Mr. Grip, your time's up.
What's that?
You've run out of time there.
I've run out of time?
Yeah, you're out of time.
Oh, okay. Well, can I say one more thing? That, Andrew Power has said it won't affect the traffic on Thousand Oaks. The plan there shows the new road coming into the city hall. It'll require another, another traffic signal down there. And it's only 600 feet from Herb's Road. And I'm sure any traffic engineer will tell you that that's, that's going to impact Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Thank you, sir.
The other thing that I'd like to say, one more thing?
You've gone, you've gone well over your time.
Well, I know, but there's one more thing.
No, all right.
Why don't you condemn or purchase the three or four houses on Oakwood Lane?
Thank you, sir.
So you could put your parking structure parallel to the existing park.
Mr. Grip, please, the public comments are three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kidway, followed by Chase Rashid.
Nick Kidway, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor of City Council. I like the line, "Frame a central downtown square for Thousand Oaks." Square, that's a little better concept than a stupid downtown. Nobody gives a damn about a downtown, and we don't have a downtown here and never will. This plan gets an F, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm very disappointed that there is no one here to speak against it. There's no one to speak for the taxpayer. There were two people who ran for council, or maybe three, that said they would not waste money on frivolous things. And one was holding out, but the whole concept of a two-committee is to get people abroad. And then all you need is one more to make the thing move forward. That was done originally to build this, this building. And in fact, we've lost 100 employees already. So it's already overbuilt and wasted space. Who remembers the Kilroy development? I don't think the mayor does. That was the, one of the first people that wanted to build here and failed, and Kilroy. If you go in downtown of El Segundo, you'll see them everywhere. The interesting thing is that there's a 26-page of pictures of beautiful things, but nothing about what the cost would be, what would be the cost to the taxpayers. This thing is going to be, I wish I could say, the end of the bottomless pit. There's no, no bottom to it. How much money can we lose? Nobody knows. Try to get something about from, about the lakes. They'll give you two-years-old information and redact it to death so that you cannot understand what's going on. And then they, the losses incur every year. So the total losses so far, you have to finish that before you can make any money. So real estate is what? Location, location, location. This is a bad location. That's what it is. And despite what Mr. Adam wants to do, you cannot make this work. You cannot make this into a, into a rodeo drive. Forget it. Stop wasting your time. Go and do some more productive things. It's very disgusting that there's no, that there's so much spin on one side that nobody speaks to the truth about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Chase Rashid. Good evening, Chase.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Chase Rashid, City of Thousand Oaks. I've been here for 20 years, actually, in the same neighborhood. I actually live just not far from here, so this will be part of my neighborhood. I think it's a good plan. I, I think it's necessary. I- I, and actually, you know, if you go on old maps, and I forget what the site is, but you can get maps like back to 1952 and see the street layout. A lot of this area was the original part of Thousand Oaks, so I think this is the right place to build it. As for the street that's going to, the proposed street, I, I don't think that will impact traffic much, so I think it'll actually allow people to get into this, into the Civic Arts Plaza area a little bit easier. And let's, I'd also like to say that I did attend one, it was a workshop for this plan. I can't remember exactly when it was, but it was right here. I attended that. Staff answered questions and concerns that I had. They answered them very well, and I was pleased to read in the Acorn that the plan is going to involve private funding. That's going to save the taxpayers a lot of money, and I approve of the plan, and I ask the council move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, that concludes our public speakers, so if the council would like to comment or have some discussion, maybe even a motion? Any staff follow-up in relation to that before we go into the council questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the only thing I would add is, similar to what Chase Rashid just shared, one of our recommendations is to evaluate the financing, and our focus really is going to be on our partnerships. So, certainly something to consider as you evaluate that recommendation.
Well, Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
I was going to propose a motion.
Love it.
And that would be to approve staff recommendations and Ad-Hoc Committee recommendations one through five to get the ball rolling on this.
We have a motion. Madam Clerk, will you put the vote together?
That motion carries 5-0.
Again, I just want to commend the two of you. I deliberately held off looking at what you had put together, and I was so overwhelmingly pleased, and all those, those three elements of entertainment, the environment, and the community itself that you, the two of you love each of those three, and it comes through in this, and I know there's more to come. So, well done. Mr. Powers, do you have any follow-up items?
Just that our next regularly-scheduled city council meeting will be on Tuesday, the 19th of November. We will have the building code update item that was continued until that evening, and we will have a study session on our general plan, the council's first study session. And that is all, other than just want to remind councils, I know Mayor McCoy will as well, this is obviously a very poignant and important week for the city of Thousand Oaks and residents that live here. We will be unveiling the Healing Garden at a ceremony on Thursday, Canejo Creek North at 3:15, in our one-year anniversary of the borderline tragedy. And so, we invite anyone in the community that is able or interested in attending to please do so. In addition, there is a storyteller's function that's tied to the borderline memorial as well, and that will be happening here at city hall on Friday evening, and there are still tickets available for anyone that is interested at 7:00.
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Ms. Noonan?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one closed session tonight. It's on conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Thousand Oaks versus Southern California Edison, case number 56201900533120, pursuant to government code section 54956.91. It's unlikely I'll have anything to report.
Thank you. Tonight, we are going to adjourn, adjourn the meeting with two separate readings. And tonight, we'll begin with John Rogers Lazar. And we're adjourning tonight's city council meeting in memory of John Rogers Lazar, who passed away October 19th. For nearly five decades, Roger has been an integral part of our Thousand Oaks community. He and his wife Judy moved their young family to the Canejo Valley in 1971 and became involved in their new hometown. Roger worked as a mechanical engineer at several local companies, including Bunker Ramo, Teledyne, Data Metrics, and Rytech Rugged. But he is known for his tireless commitment to many community organizations that he supported, such as the Canejo Valley Little League, the Canejo Valley YMCA, and St. Pascal's Baelon Church, which awarded him their Man of Honor Award for his lifetime of service. He served these organizations as a leader, fundraiser, coach, and a cheerleader, and his influence will be felt for generations to come. Roger will be deeply missed by his family, his friends, and the many people he has touched throughout his decades of service to our city. When I heard the news, I was in Israel, and my heart was, was touched deeply, and we will miss him, and we adjourn the meeting tonight in his memory, and also, we are needing to remember the victims of the borderline shooting. And so, we're going to adjourn in their memory tonight. Our community has been devastated by the senseless tragedy of the Borderline Bar and Grill, November 7, 2018, shooting. Lives were senselessly taken, leaving families and loved ones broken, and all our hearts devastated. No anniversary is more terrible than one that recalls beautiful lives tragically lost. Tonight, we remember our heroes and celebrate their lives. In memory of Sean Adler, age 48, Cody Kaufman, 22, Blake Dingman, 21, Jake Dunham, 21, Sergeant Ron Heelis, 54, Alana Housley, 18, Daniel Manrique, 33, Justin Allen Meek, 23, Marky Mesa Jr., 20, Christina Morissette, 20, Telamakis Orfanos, 27, and Noel Sparks, 21. We adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of the 12 who lost their lives. God bless you all, and we'll see you at the next meeting.